You don't have to add anything to the agenda. I updated it already, so it's the second and last one on the agenda.
Okay, but this is an old agenda.
That one would be put on this, the second and last one.
Okay, got it. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would call the regular city council meeting of December 11th, 2018 to order. We have a special event this evening. We got a flag ceremony with the Richfield Cub Scout Pack 384. I think they're going to do a presentation of the flags, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. So if the Boy Scouts could come forward, please? Oh, is it Boy and Girl Scouts? I apologize. Please be seated. Next item on the agenda is the open forum, and I've got two individuals that would like to speak to the council and the citizens. Both want to speak about something that is on the agenda. Normally, we don't allow open forum speakers to address something that's going to be discussed on the agenda. I've made exceptions before with the approval of the city council. So I'm going to do it again, but we're all familiar with it. We've listened to a lot of the comments and the statements, and I don't object to listening to them again. But just remember, sign in, and you have approximately three minutes to speak, so thank you. The first person is Patty Bergen.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Patty Bergen. I live at 2414 West 65th and 1/2 Street, and my home is directly north of the proposed development. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. At the November 26th meeting, an amendment of a 3-5 plan was submitted and accepted by the HRA. The 3-5 allowed three stories on the west and north sides of the building, and five stories on the east and south sides. It is still my feelings, and the feelings of others in the neighborhood, that this development is far too large for the site. The proposed development site currently has single-family homes on all four sides of what is a vibrant and healthy neighborhood. I would like the city council and the members of the planning commission to please reconsider the 3-5 plan. Please limit this development to be no higher than three stories on all sides. The questions I have tonight concerning the development are as follows. What data do we have available on projected occupancy rates? While this building may likely fail initially due to its being new, what is the projected occupancy in five years, eight years, 10 years, et cetera? Is it necessary to build a 184-unit building that may only be 2/3 full in five years? How many occupants will be allowed in each unit? There are 29 studios, 71 bedrooms, 24 one-bedroom plus den, and 56 two-bedroom. There is parking for 279 cars. If two occupants are allowed for each unit, one bedroom and above, and each occupant has a car, this would be 329 cars. That is in excess of 50 cars that need to be parked somewhere. If the building were reduced to three stories with less units, that would alleviate this concern. What is the facilities planned for street parking on Russell Queen and 65th and 1/2? Each side of the proposed building has exits that lead to street access. There is no reason to believe that the residents won't use these exits in order to park closer to their apartments, especially in the warmer months. These are narrow streets. Emergency vehicles, snowplows, garbage trucks, et cetera, will have a difficult time maneuvering these streets if parking is allowed on both sides. Will stop signs be placed at all four corners of the intersection of 65th and Russell, and the two corners of 65th and 1/2 and Queen? Will there be pedestrian crossing signs on 65th near Sheridan Hills School Playground? Traffic moves very fast on 65th, and it is already dangerous. Could we consider having Russell become a one-way to reduce traffic? Could we consider making 65th and 1/2 a dead end for the same reason? The nouveau is a pet-friendly building, and I like animals. I have a dog and walk her in Sheridan Park every day. One problem with dog walkers is that many of them don't pick up after their pets and leave feces in the park along the path and in the green spaces meant for children and adults to use. This is an ongoing problem, and this is a concern year-round. If only 50 occupants have a pet and use the park, I can guarantee that they will add to the problem. My husband and I also pick up-
Ms. Bergen, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up shortly, please.
The loss of the existing neighborhood, the old growth trees and foliage, will be felt for many years. What can the city offer so that both old and new residents alike are made to feel appreciated and wanted? I clearly heard the concern in several of the commissioner's voices at the November meeting, expressing concern for the existing residents and neighbors. As Richfield moves forward with development, the city should be thoughtful and slowly, carefully take into account the precedents that they are setting. Again, I ask that the city allow no more than three stories for this development. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to butcher this name, I apologize in advance. Ms. Ruann Onestrosen? All right. I'd appreciate the assistance.
Ruann Onestirosan, 2421 West 65th Street. The planning commission recommends a pre-and past inspection of neighbors' real property be conducted by an independent contractor. Subsequently, I find that the recommendation before us is that one of the parties, the destroying party, is to both solicit and reimburse the independent assessor. Do you find this to be a fair and prudent recommendation? Have the proposed destroyers of seven real properties provided council substantiating evidence that the seven real properties, title indeed, have been turned over to Broadway investors and/or associates through legal and binding contractual agreement? Have residents and/or tenants been advised that their residence are to be destroyed? Prior to the fall of 2018, in its many updates of the comprehensive plan, did council bring before the public its intention to destroy the seven properties, the Bank of Established Trees, and the Russell Avenue to the detriment of one and all residents in the nearby vicinity? My neighbors are very elderly, physically and mentally handicapped, and many schoolchildren. Parents and we neighbors have voiced strong opposition to the entire project as stated in my cease and desist letter to you dated December 14th, I'm sorry, December 4th, 2018, which summarized my personal concerns. Council continues to lightly dismiss self-preservation and good health issues. We are vulnerables. We are the most vulnerables. We do not invade and destroy our peace. Why do you ignore us?
Thank you. Next item calls for the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 27th, 2018, and the special city council meeting of November 28th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Next item up is Councilmember Howard will be introducing the annual meeting with the Transportation Commission.
And you've done it, the Transportation Commission.
Very professional. Nope.
I take that that's me, right? All right. Last year, the year before, I always do it after the foundation, and everybody leaves. So I got a bit more of an audience today, so. Well, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to come and highlight some of the great work of the Transportation Commission over the past year. We've talked about it a lot, but I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. First, I'd like to highlight the participation from our commission members. Attendance remains very high, and once people are assigned to the commission, they want to stay on the commission. I want to recognize two members, Tim Carter and Gary Ness. Both are finishing up their ninth year on the Transportation Commission, which is their service limit, so they will no longer be able to participate, but nine years is quite a run. We've also maintained strong interest from our youth liaisons. You guys heard one speak today at our meeting, and we also got another youth liaison. So currently, we have Richfield High School and Holy Angels represented on our commission, which is pretty cool. So we've had that for the last two years. One of the main priorities in 2018 was updating the city pedestrian plan. The talks began last January, and they were a topic all the way through October. You guys were able to approve the direction that we gave you, and that was approved last month in November. 2018 ushered another exciting road construction project, the Richfield-funded Lindale Avenue. The commission was yet again called upon to help the community, provide community insight on Richfield's main roads. That was outdated and shared a variety of safety concerns. We're a very tenured group here. We've had a lot of road projects come through, 66th Street, Portland. So we were ready to hit the ground running with Lindale Avenue. So many of the recommendations we made, three-lane roads, turn lanes, roundabouts, and improved on-street parking were at the center of what we recommended. When some of the design was met with resistance from some of our citizens, I'm really proud to say that our commission stepped up. Many of our members of the commission, along with you guys, actually had an onsite meeting on Lindale Avenue to address concerns, listen to the residents, and then also provide some insight as to why we made the decisions that we did. So after a lot of work, the council approved the design for Lindale, and we're one step closer to another awesome road in Richfield. So there are a lot of great highlights, but I just wanted to highlight those three things. 2019 will keep us busy with 65th Street, and as you guys heard tonight, 494. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to share some 2018 highlights, and looking forward to what we'll accomplish in 2019.
Any questions?
Well, thank you. You mentioned Chair Widenbach, that there's a lot of tenure on the commission, but that hasn't translated into complacency. I mean, what I've appreciated when I've been the liaison is just the pushing for, the asking questions, the trying to really look to the future, and that's really served the community well over the years.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia has the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce the Richfield Foundation. Mr. Scott Verdues is going to speak. And I want you to know that the Richfield Foundation, that's one of the smart moves that we made when we put that together, but the other smart move was putting the Transportation Commission together, because they've done such a great job in mostly controversial issues, but you've really done a good job. But the Richfield Foundation has been just an integral part of this city. And one of the things that I refer to as, you know, people that give of themselves and give their time and money and energy are community builders. And that's what you are, and that's what makes Richfield work well. And that's why people like to live in Richfield. The other thing I want to mention before Scott speaks is that, you know, this is 501(c)(3), and so you can get a tax deduction from your donations, and all of that goes right back into the community. So it's a beautiful circle that we've got. Some of these folks that apply really don't have the means to tap into other monies, and so the Richfield Foundation really keeps them staying afloat and helping all our citizens that are in need. And we appreciate you 100%.
Agree completely. We are excited to be a part of a community where there's a lot of great work going on. We're really thrilled every year to be able to support what we, and do what we can to both financially support and celebrate a lot of great work. I want, we've got a few other board members with us here tonight, and I want to just ask them to introduce themselves briefly.
Susan Rosenberg. I'm the chair of the grants committee, and I'm the one that gets to spend the money.
Ed Widenbach again.
Hi all, I'm Claire Gaylor.
Hi, I'm Rose Jost, and I'm the secretary.
We have a number of other, we have a really good board, but a number of conflicts and illnesses prevented many of them from being here, but we're also pleased to note-
Some of us had to work tonight.
That's right. Some people are here and in other places in the room, but Councilmember Trautman, we appreciate your service, and Mayor Elliott as well. For those, since we do have kind of a full crowd tonight, I do want to just elaborate a little bit on what Councilmember Garcia said, and that is the Richfield Foundation has been around now for almost, this is our 30th year, and we're an all-volunteer group, which does a pretty simple thing. We raise funds for an endowment, which we then maintain and use to distribute grants to a number of really excellent groups doing work here in Richfield, here in our community. And so we're really pleased to be able to do that again here tonight. We will, in a minute, ask this year's grantees to come up, and as usual, in a minute or so or less, explain what the funds that you're receiving will be used for. We'll call you up alphabetically. But I also first want to take a moment and thank some people. We've had a good year. Got, oh, thank you, the AV person. We've had a good year this year. We had our most successful wine event as a fundraiser in October, when we, this was our sixth year, and it was our most lucrative. And thanks to that and some other good fundraising we've done in the last few years, we're able to give tonight more grants than we've ever given before. We're topping the $20,000 mark for the first time tonight, and we're really pleased to be able to continue to grow as a resource in the community. Part of the way we're able to do that is because of the sponsors that we had at the wine event this year, and those are the logos that you're seeing rotating through on the screen now. I also want to just acknowledge some of the big transitions that are in this room and the roles that you all have played. We're grateful for Steve Devich and the years of leadership he had. We've had a great relationship with the city and the city staff over many years, and we're grateful for all he did, and looking forward to working with the new city manager. We're also glad for the support from Councilmember Howard and Mayor Elliott for all that you've done, and we wish you the best in your next phase of your life after you move on past the council. And we're looking forward to working with Mayor-elect and the new city council members that'll be coming in, so. All right. I think that's gone through, so we'll turn that off, and we'll get to the fun part. Again, one at a time, and we're going to start alphabetically with Assistance League. And I'll mention briefly that when we're done here, the grantees, if you could join us in the lobby, we like to try to get one big group photo with all the grantees and the board members who are here tonight.
Thank you so much to the Richfield Foundation for your generous support of Assistance League. My name is Cindy Stone, and it is my privilege to be the president of our chapter this year. With me is Linda Rosdahl, our vice president for resource development. Assistance League is an all-volunteer, community nonprofit dedicated to meet the basic needs of children and families in the greater Twin Cities. We are transforming lives and strengthening community with our programs in food, clothing, literacy, and education enrichment. We are proud of the beautiful and productive partnership we have with Richfield Public Schools. Earlier this month, Assistance League gave out over $10,000 in teacher grants that will impact hundreds of Richfield students, ECFE, through high school. In September, we once again partnered with Richfield Middle School's sixth-grade teaching staff to provide the book Refugee to each sixth-grade student for their global read-aloud program. We continue to stock the storeroom at the high school with clothes, winter gear, toiletries, and school supplies for use by students as accessed by teachers and staff at every Richfield school. And we have supplied staff wish lists at many of the Richfield schools as well. Assistance League is continuing to look for additional opportunities to partner with Richfield Public Schools so together, we can continue to see the students and families of Richfield thrive and flourish. And of course, I cannot conclude my remarks without mentioning our fantastic thrift shop. Assistance League Thrift Shop at 64th and Penn, the best thrift shop in town. Stop by with your donations to purchase our quality items at bargain prices and to meet more of our friendly volunteers. And thanks also to the city of Richfield, who helped fund our beautiful new signage at our shop. To learn more about Assistance League, visit our website at msp-assistanceleague.org. Thank you again for your generous support so that together, we can continue to make a difference in the lives of the children and families we serve. Thank you.
Cornerstone is our second.
You all know about Cornerstone. Cornerstone was founded in the early 80s, and it is a school-based service program, and they are going to, they're working a lot with young men, which is really kind of an innovative idea. They're working with men in the anti-bullying programs, and so their funding is going towards that. That's kind of a new and innovative way in Richfield schools. So anyway, we will send their check to them, but no, they are, as we all know, a terrific program for Richfield.
Crossroads Panorama?
Thank you. I want to also, the mayor and Michael congratulate you on your endeavors to go forward. And every, all the councilmen, thank you. I want to thank Richfield Foundation. I've tried many years to get this grant, y'all, and it took so long. But I finally made it, and I'm so thankful and grateful to you and all those that helped support. Crossroads is a nonprofit organization that empowers youth to be successful through the arts. We've been doing this over 37 years or more. We are located in the hub. Our mission is to equip youth with positive lifelong learning experiences and positive empowerment for purpose and self-worth and change. While this empowerment is primary focus, we also have a secondary purpose to tap into each young people's potential to empower. We know that they have unlimited ability, and they're only using sometimes just a little bit. But I empower them through Crossroads, through our plays, as they act as a mirror reflecting their lives and giving them that opportunity to express themselves. Because a lot of times, they come into Crossroads, they don't know what they want to do. Most of our recruits, our outreach efforts, are those that are on the streets, those that are schools all over. So we have this opportunity for them. We invest in them as they come to the Crossroads with their lives, and we deal with behavior issues in our youth today. And we're making great impacts, because some of the youth and some of the participants have gone on to pursue their purpose in many careers and are doing well. We also, not only the youth are being impacted, but the families are being impacted too. So because we pulled them in also, and they volunteer their time, because they're with their child, it brings families together. And so I am really happy to present that, and if you want more information, you can look us up on the web. We're at crossroadspanorama.com, and thank you very much.
The remarks are a good reminder that as happy as we are to be able to say yes as much as we did this year, we still have to say no to some really good groups. Even this year, we had to say no to almost half of the applications we received. So we'll keep working to try to build this resource so we can say yes more often and no less often. Loaves and Fishes is next.
Good evening, Mayor Elliott and councilmembers. My name is Kathy Mays, and I'm the executive director of Loaves and Fishes Minnesota. We are the largest open-to-the-public-dining site in Minnesota. We serve about 2,700 meals every single day. We started in Richfield back in 2005 at the Assumption Church, and we moved to Hope Church in 2007. And since that time, we have served way over 200,000 meals out of that location. In 2014, we opened up our site in Richfield on the weekends. It was our first weekend site at Wood Lake Church, and that has been very, very successful. We are excited to announce that next week, we will celebrate our millionth meal in 2018. Thank you. Some people ask me, is that a good thing, or is that a bad thing? And it's just a thing. As long as people are hungry, we will open our doors and feed them nutritious food. Your commitment to our mission means that we have the ability to continue to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables for those who are hungry and those in need here in Richfield. So we are very grateful for your support and look forward to continuing to serve in Richfield for many, many years.
Oasis for Youth? Oasis for Youth?
Oasis. Oasis is another organization that has been around for a while. They do a lot of street outreach for homeless teens. They are housed at Oak Grove Presbyterian Church down in Bloomington, and- They are housed at Oak Grove Presbyterian Church down in Bloomington and they do a terrific job. And I will also send their check to them.
Partnership Academy. And the AV person, they've got another slide that they want to run here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Lisa Hendricks and I'm the executive director and founder of Partnership Academy in Richfield. Is it up? Yeah, I'm up there, but not yet. And I'm here tonight with Shannon Jaeger. Thank you. She is our science teacher at Partnership Academy and she's been with us for 11 years now. This is our first time as well receiving the foundation grant. We've applied for many years too and so we're really, really excited and thankful to be a recipient, especially at this time in our organizational lifecycle. We are 17 years old and we currently operate out of Assumption Church. And I remember when Loaves and Fishes was there in Susan Rosenberg. That's where I first met her, was when they were serving out of Assumption Church, Loaves and Fishes. But just this past summer, we were approved to expand at 6,500 Nicollet Avenue. As you can see there, it's a depiction of our future home, which will be moving in in July, or June 30th, if you will. But we are currently preschool through sixth grade, about 320 students, serving primarily Latino students in the area, Richfield, South Minneapolis, and the Bloomington area. And we'll grow to about 470 students pre-K through eighth grade. This year, we started our middle school program. We were K-5 last year and this year, we added sixth grade in preparation for our growth and expansion and have really had to develop our middle school program as we go here. And I'll let Ms. Jaeger speak a little bit about what she's doing to develop our science program, but as you can see in the pictures there, with the funds that we receive from the foundation, we're able to buy some pretty cool science materials. So, I'll let her talk a little bit about that.
So, as Lisa was saying, we're just kind of building up the science program from the ground up. And I think that these photos, I can't see them anymore, sorry, they're gone. I think that they just really capture how much science in our schools matters to our kids because what I've been noticing just in this year of having the kids come to science every single day, they're starting to make those connections between the different content areas and they're starting to see how things aren't isolated and how they all actually interconnect. And so, unfortunately, science is expensive. And so, I just want to thank, I'm just so thankful for these funds to be able to expand what we already have and purchase microscopes. Because right now, the photograph that we have, we had to go on a field trip to use the microscope. So, it's really going to be a great opportunity for our students to have those in-house to be able to use. So, thank you.
You can check out our Facebook page or our website, but our Facebook page has lots of fun science updates on there, on top of the expansion plans. And we finally have walls up in the building. If you haven't driven by 65th and Nicollet there, yesterday, the first wall went up. So, that was a very exciting time for us. So, thank you all.
Mayor, council members, my name is Tamara Weir. Thank you so much to the foundation. We are so grateful. I am the director of People with Capes. We are a capes, as in superhero. We believe that we all have superpower and everybody figuring out what that is for everybody means something different. One of the primary things that we do is support our parents and our community. And we provide a parenting support group with community. And I thought it would be best if we just heard from somebody who attends it rather than I describe the program. That be okay?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor Elliott and council. Yes, thank you for having me and thank you so much for this participation of this group. I have been involved with it since April and it's changed my life. Trying not to get emotional. My apologies. I had an emotional time this year. Invited to a meeting and I went to the meeting and I networked with fabulous people and through that going to this every week, I've learned so many things about myself and been So sorry. The guest speakers talk about nutrition. I've lost 30 pounds. I know I have a lot of ways to go. I've changed my life. Food choices, spending choices, budgeting. I had a student loan for $13,000 balance last year and because of this funding, I have put the monies toward paying the student loan off and I have 2,800 left to pay. Thank you. I have spread the word about this group to so many people because parents of this community, it is so important that we can be enriched and encouraged because our children are the ones that are going to be future community leaders. And to be able to have the support, the financial support, the emotional support of the group, the learning that we get, it means a lot to myself and to the other members of the group. And I just thank you so much. It means so much to me and a lot of the other people that couldn't be here today. So, thank you.
So Lisa wears a cape.
The Richfield Fourth of July Committee. Red, white, and blue days. Now, I got it wrong, didn't I?
Hello, Mayor Elliott and the rest of the council. My name is Heather and I am the president of the Richfield Red, White, and Blue Days, which we had switched our name. Last year was our first official launch. My third year as the president, and of course, we're already planning, always in need of new members. We stepped in as a brand-new group because the old committee had gathered their friends and then slowly phased out, lost different ideas, and just wanted to move on. So, we are the Summer Festival of Richfield. It's always been held on July 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. So, and the 2nd has always traditionally been Family Night with the kiddie parade, movie in the park, dance DJ, fun things for families, all ages. Kids have a blast. The 3rd, we have really worked to try to make it an all-day event. So, we've done a Latino radio station during the day on the 3rd. We have done multiple games and bands. And then, the 4th is probably one of my favorites. We start the day with a wreath ceremony in the morning, which we just began last year at the Honoring All Veterans Memorial. And then, the day leads right into the parade, which is about two hours long and phenomenal. So, we highly recommend any and all businesses in the area to join us because it's always a great time, rain or shine. And then, we do live music before our fireworks at 10:00 PM. And so, with this funding from the grant, or from the foundation, which we are so grateful for, last year, we actually had one of the bigger sponsors pull back and it really helped us to allocate and fund Family Night. So, that was delightful for us to be able to not worry what we were going to have to do or cancel one of the favorite nights for the community. But like I said, we're always looking for new members or new committee members. We're run by a group of seven, which three days is a lot for seven people. And volunteers for the three days. It's a two-hour stint and people have a blast doing it. So, we really appreciate the support from the city council and from the foundation.
The Richfield Historical Society.
My name's David Butler. I'm on the board of the Richfield Historical Society and I help with fundraising. I want to thank the Richfield Foundation for this grant. The foundation does a great job. They serve a great need for the community. Very proud of what they do. The Richfield Historical Society originated as a result of some women in the community decided that the old Bartholomew House should not be destroyed. It was ready to be demolished to create an athletic field. And these women said, no, that's not going to happen. And they organized the society and they convinced the school district that that house ought to be preserved. And so, the Historical Society's, for a long time, their mission was to operate the Bartholomew House. Then, they had a dream that the city needed a history center. And so, that dream came true in 2005 and they remodeled the building that was next to the Bartholomew House and that became the Richfield History Center. And the mission of that center is to preserve stories about Richfield, preserve them, and then share them with the rest of the community. And that has become the focus of the history center. One of the first things they did was in 2005, said, we need a history of Richfield. We've had people have written small articles about it, but we need a comprehensive history. And so, we raised the money and hired an author and we put this book together, Minnesota's, Richfield, Minnesota's oldest suburbs. We had, we've had 4,000 printed and they've been sold and we've got to have another printing because it's still popular. As Steve Lindgren said after he read the book, you guys really hit a home run on this one. It's a great book and people really like it. You can buy it at the History Center or at Bachmann's, they sell it there. And I would encourage you, if you've got stories about things that happened in Richfield, maybe your family stories or your business stories, come to us and tell us your stories. Give them to us. We'll preserve them. We have the equipment to do that. Then, we can share them back with the whole community. This becomes a community affair. So, we appreciate this gift and we want to continue the work that's going on at the center. Thank you.
It's nice to have you here, David, with all the decades of commitment you've given to the community. Appreciate you being here and part of this. The Richfield Human Rights Commission.
Hello, my name is Ben Sunderland from the Richfield Human Rights Commission. Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, council members. The Richfield Human Rights Commission was formally established as a Volunteer Citizen Advisory Commission to the Richfield City Council in 1968. It's administered through the Department of Public Safety, has 13 members appointed by the council, and its mission is to secure human rights and equal opportunity for the citizens of Richfield in the areas of housing, employment, public accommodations, public services, and education, and to align its goals with those set forth in the Human Rights Act. And we're a very budget-limited group in the wisdom of our council members. So, normally, the way that we operate is to partner with community organizations to do a series of educational events through the years. We work a lot with Hennepin County Library. Several churches around the area have helped sponsor events. And this year, we wanted to do something a little bit broader and a little bit still within mission, but more than what our normal funding would allow for. And so, the project that we requested funding for from the Richfield Foundation is to provide students of Richfield High School with age-appropriate learning opportunities related to the struggles of oppressed peoples that are culturally centric, supportive, honest, and engaging. The goals are to put on a series of presentations that include a mix of performing arts, film and visual arts, literature, poetry, spoken word, as well as more formal academic presentations to provide information on relevant historical or current events and notable figures, to educate students and the public on the topics of bias, privilege, racial disparities, and forms of discrimination, and to teach students about the successes and failures of modern and historical civil rights movements. So, we'll be doing presentations in the 2019 calendar year for Black History Month, Women's History Month, Latino Heritage Month, and Native American History Month in partnership with the school district and with their guidance. And we're honored to receive this grant from the foundation.
Richfield Middle School.
Hi, Mayor Elliott, council members. Thank you to the foundation, too. My name's Emily Linley and I'm here to represent the Richfield Middle School Parent Advisory Group. We're a volunteer group of parents who are working to help the parents and students and staff of the middle school. And some of the things we do, we do raise some money, but we find that students and parents, by the time they get to middle school, are a little burnt out, so we run pretty lean. We provide items to teachers through a wish list so they can ask for things that they need for their classrooms. We provide t-shirts and other things to students. We put on a fall party for the middle schoolers. So, those are just some of the things we do. But one of the things we like to do is provides opportunities to have speakers and presentations to parents and students or staff. And like recently, at our last one, we had Jill Mecklenburg from the Richfield Police Department come and talk about internet safety. So, that's some of the things we like to do. For this specific grant that we've requested from the Richfield Foundation, it would be to pay for two guest speakers from the Wetterling Foundation. There would be two separate meetings, one geared towards parents and adult caregivers and one for students. And the one for parents and adult caregivers is geared towards building empathy, learning how empathy can be a powerful antidote to bullying and toxic choices. And the students' presentation would be called Bystander to Upstander: Taking on Bullying Behavior. And that would help students learn how to create a community where everyone is respected while problem-solving and being a voice for change. And learning from these experts will help strengthen the students and the families of RMS. They'll learn actions they can take to create a healthier life at school and home. And families will be able to have open and honest discussions about topics that can be difficult to talk about. Where students will be, we want to help students learn how to be successful when it comes to their relationships with others and learn how to keep themselves safe and also help others. Educating the students and the families will make Richfield a better place to live, raise a family, and to support each other. And all of these things, we feel, match perfectly with the ideas of successful kids, secure families, and strong community, which the Richfield Foundation is hoping to support. So, we really appreciate the support and thank you.
Tapestry.
Mi nombre es Melissa. Soy pastora de tapestry. Somos una iglesia aquí en Richfield donde enseñamos clases en inglés y español. Y siempre les damos la bienvenida a todos que vengan a participar con nosotros. So, I'm very pleased to be here tonight with the mayor and the members of the city council and with the Richfield Foundation. We're a church here in Richfield. I'm Pastor Melissa. We started about a year and a half ago, teaching Spanish and English as a second language classes, principally to people in Richfield, but some in Bloomington and Minneapolis as well. We are a little bit different than most classes like this because we teach at the same time. Sometimes, we teach everybody together and you'll hear a lot of laughter in English and Spanish. We talk a lot about building bridges and that's a good thing, but we really focus on crossing the bridge. on crossing the bridges. And so we provide opportunities for people from different languages, or people from different cultures who speak different languages, to come together in a safe space and find real relationship. And we have been pleased to do that now for about two years here in Richfield. Last year, we did receive a grant and we were able to add transportation and childcare, which got us from basically two or three kids to about 15. And it tripled our class sizes. And so we were pleased to use those funds in that way last year and to help fund some other parts of the program. This year, we'll continue to do that, but we are also offering some theater work and that will be in Spanish and English for the students. It will be very student focused and we'll bring that out to the community as well. I would just like to add that having, receiving this, this funding from the Richfield Foundation is really important to us because it shows that we are a part of this community and we are so very pleased to be a part of Richfield. Thank you. Gracias.
Hi, I'm Krista. I'm from Treehouse. Thank you so much for having me, council members and guests. Treehouse works with At-Rest teens, grades seven through 12. We're located at Bloomington and Evergreen Church, but half of our teens we work with are Richfield residents. And they come to us with, 60% have thought suicide, bullying, self-harming. They really don't have that self-worth capability with them, within them. So at Treehouse with, through mentoring and peer support groups and a teaching component, they learn that they're lovable, capable, worthwhile, love without strings, and not alone. And those are our five main messages we give to our kids. So that when they graduate, that they can go off into the world and be self-sufficient adults with self-worth and able to help the community that they're in. And the funds from Richfield Foundation, which we're so grateful for, are for our student leadership team. These are about eight to 10 kids that our staff have kind of realized either need help in that leadership skills or have presented those leadership skills and they want to work on. So they really help with building that culture in the Bloomington Treehouse, welcoming the new kids that come in. Tonight, for instance, is our support group night. So about 6:30, they come in, they have a meal that they can share with. They're welcoming, they're playing some games. And then they get split up into groups of five to seven and have support group. And that's just, it's facilitated by our staff, but it's really about the peers coming together and ensuring that they feel supported and loved during their week's challenges, successes. And then by 8:30, they are, we have provided free transportation and so they are transported back home safely and soundly. So thank you so much. This is a great treat for us.
And last but not least is Veep.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Patty Schultz. I'm the advancement director at Veep. And our, Veep's roots in the Richfield community are really deep. We were actually founded 45 years ago by members of 13 Richfield churches. So I, and I know one of the first closets that designated a food pantry was Woodlake, very important church to me personally. My grandparents are founding members of it. But aside from that, for, for those of you who maybe aren't aware, Veep is a basic needs social service organization. Our focus areas are providing access to healthy foods, housing stability, and supportive services. We are really grateful for this, this grant. One of our more recent initiatives is a mobile food pantry. We launched it in March of this year and just late summer, we started being at Seasons, oh God, Seasons Park Apartments right here in Richfield. And it's just so far, we've, 168 households have come to get food from that mobile food pantry. And over 3,000 pounds of food have been distributed. And that's mostly fresh produce. That's our focus with the mobile food pantry. So we are really excited and we're not only working, having the bus there, but we're really making, it's becoming more of a community event when we get there. We're working with Aon, who is busy refurbishing that, that complex in Hope Church, which has its veggie table. And we're talking about how we can partner there. So it's really involving several parts of the community in this effort. So thank you very much for this grant. We really deeply appreciate it.
If you, if you are here tonight for other agenda items, I appreciate your patience as we went through all that. But this is, this is the highlight of the year for us, to get a chance to give a little glimpse of all the amazing work that's being done in our community and those that we are able to support with our financial dollars tonight. So we continue to try to grow as a resource for the community. I just want to mention, if you want any more information about the foundation or information about how you can be a part of it, the website is richfieldfoundationmn, all one word, richfieldfoundationmn.org. And you can find plenty more information there. Thanks again for letting us be here tonight. We're always thrilled to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, if you could join us in the lobby, we'd like to get a group picture if
The next item on the agenda is council discussion. The first item calls for the city council, excluding council member Howard and myself from interviewing, for dates for interviewing commission applicants. It looks like they're tentatively set for January 12th and the 19th, but I'll leave that to Mayor-elect Reagan Gonzalez and the council members to decide and definitely set the dates.
Both of those dates work for me. I don't know.
Me too.
Yep. Do we need to just pick one date or hold them both?
I think we like to hold them both, just in case.
Hold them both?
Yeah, depending on how many applicants, so that there's enough time.
They work for all of us.
Obvious collaboration will carry well into next year, which is nice to see. Next item is hats off to hometown hits. I think Councilmember Garcia is going to pretty much run through the entire list, so the rest of us probably have the rest of the evening off. But go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. Well, first, we want to, the city council as well as city staff want to offer condolences to the family of Beth Marshall, who worked at the, as a utility billing clerk at the Public Works Department. She has been, she had, she passed away on Saturday. The services will be on the 21st of the month. And she'd been with the city for 19 years. And according to Krista Nasher, our director, she was just a joy to be around. She was positive, hardworking, like, you know, had a good sense of humor. And so we send our condolences to the family. Next, tomorrow, at, we will have an open house on 65th Street Reconstruction, and that will be here at City Hall from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then on the 13th of December, at the Richfield Community Center will be the Arts, the Arts Commission. They will have an artist exchange and social. So if you want to come and look around at all the creative artists that we have in Richfield, and if you want to join and participate in the festivities and kind of, you know, it's, it's a fun group. And they're a group that really, you know, bolsters each other with, you know, with their craft. It's just a good deal to go to, and that's on the 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. On the 14th, we will have our, we will continue with our winter farmer's market. That'll be the 14th, which is on a Friday, at the Richfield Community Center. And on the 31st of December, we'll have the Candlelight Ice New Year's Eve Party. And that is going to happen at Woodlake Nature Center. And as always, you know, you want to, you know, you want to be prepared, you know, for later on in the night. And that's only, that starts at 5:00 p.m. I don't think you have to stay till midnight. And let me see, what else? And the other thing I wanted to mention is the, one of the things that we always brag about is our police department. And the police work with Target and other community businesses. And Target is generous enough to award $200, $200 to 12 Richfield youth who have been selected because of their high stylistic achievements. And the police, each one police officer and one child will go in and, you know, they're paired one-on-one. So they'll go in and they'll buy gifts for their families. They'll come back to City Hall. They'll partake in pizza from Broadway Pizza. And they'll wrap the gifts and it's just, it's turned out to be one heck of a nice party to be at. So I want to, you know, hats off to our police officer, who are always very community-minded and very observant of, you know, of whatever's going on in Richfield, especially the holidays. And that's about it, Mayor.
Thank you much. Appreciate it. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make my, my hats off brief, but I just wanted to touch on our commissions and take my hats off to our commissioners. And just like we discussed earlier, this is an opportunity for people that are looking to get more involved. And I know with myself and I imagine with the other council members and the mayor, people often come up and say, "Well, I love Richfield. How do I get more involved?" This is a way that you can get more involved. The, the city relies on, on the hard work and, and the judgment and the diligence that our council members, they, they put in a lot of volunteer hours. They bring a lot of intelligence and passion to, to their committees and we're grateful. And I'll make a special invitation. This is where our city voice is really reflected. And so if you, if you think about yourself and you think, "Well, not a lot of people like me are often have a voice in our, in our city government," this is, I'll make a special invitation. So whether, whether you're a person of color or have disabilities or you're renters, we tend to not have, we have less renters on our commissions. We just invite you to make your voice heard, but all are welcome. And last year, I think for the first time in anybody's memory, we had more commissioners than we had positions available to fill. So I think that says great things about Richfield.
And Councilmember Troutman, the applications for those commissions and, at the end of the month?
They're due at the end of the month and you can find them, thank you for reminding me, Councilmember Garcia, on our city webpage. So if you go to the city webpage and there's a dropdown menu and it says "Commissions", it'll take you to a link where you can apply. It's a one-page, I think it's a one-page application. It's not, it's not burdensome and I'd invite you to please consider applying.
Thank you. Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez?
Well, first I'd like to start by saying that this is the last meeting of Mayor Elliott and Councilmember Howard, and it's just been a pleasure working with both of you. You will be greatly missed and I look forward to continuing our work in, here in Richfield. So thank you so much. Second, the Richfield Chamber of Commerce has their holiday party this Thursday at 4:30 at Vina Copia in East Richfield. And they will be taking $10 suggested donations or non-perishable food items. So all the proceeds for that holiday event will be going to Veep. And it's just a great opportunity to sample some wines, get to know some businesses and community members here in Richfield. And that's this Thursday at Vina Copia at 4:30. Just something to highlight, we were a finalist for the Humphrey Institute's Local Government Initiative Award in the city category for strengthening Richfield's apartment community and the work that we've done as a city to preserve affordable housing here in Richfield. So thank you so much to the hard work of our staff for, for doing that application and for doing all of the hard work to preserve our affordable housing. And lastly, the city of Richfield has launched their new podcast. So you can go to the city website and backslash podcast and it's called "That's Richfield." And basically, it's going to be highlighting several different stories, community stories and history here in Richfield. So you can download it on iTunes and Spotify and search for "Richfield" for the "That's Richfield" podcast.
Councilmember Howard?
Some other members took some of my items, so I don't have too much, other than to say, it is just tough to believe that this is going to be my last meeting up here. And I'll offer maybe some, some parting comments after we get through our meaty agenda. But I've just enjoyed and been so grateful for the opportunity and I'm going to savor this, this last meeting.
Thank you. I want to just make mention of the podcast that Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez talked about. I'd like everybody to listen to it because I got to do the, the initial one. And I don't have a clue what Spotify is, so I'm going to have to find another way to listen to it anyhow. It was, it was enjoyable. Neil Ruland stopped by the office and we just carried on a conversation. I didn't reveal too many secrets. Neil has them. I think he's just going to spot, talk about them every once in a while when it's a slow week on podcast. But I think it's, it's part of the initiative that Richfield is famous for. We start a lot of different things that involve the community, involve the citizens and the staff, and introduces all of us to each other in a way that, that takes us outside our neighborhoods and makes us realize that Richfield is really a wonderful, diverse city and a place to live. And east to west, north to south, you're going to find a community that shares, shares everything and is warm and loving and, and a wonderful place to live. And like Councilmember Howard said, I have a couple more comments, but I just really want to know how much I enjoyed the time I was able to serve on the city council and also as the mayor. Another item, and Councilmember Troutman talked about the commissions and the interview process and we were setting dates for it. Also, there's one that kind of falls below the radar a little bit, the Housing Redevelopment Authority and the Economic Benefit also has an opening, or maybe two, I'm not sure how many. The, the members of that commission serve at the mayor's pleasure, subject to the council's approval. And it has a real, real strong involvement in what's going on in the city. Particularly developments, changes. The 77th corridor is going to be just a heavy activity over the next two or three years. So I would encourage anybody that's interested in participating in the development of the city and also some of the economic development, throw your hat in the ring and give the mayor an opportunity to, to put you on the commission. So with that being said, thank you all, and we'll move on to, I would-
Mr. Mayor-
Sorry?
Could I please say a couple of words?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I just want to say that Mayor Elliott became mayor because when Debbie Gotal was elected to the Hennepin County Board, he kind of reluctantly agreed to run for mayor. I don't think he really wanted to. But, you know, he didn't have a choice because the rest of us said, "You're going to do it." And he did, and he's, and he's loved it. The one of, there's, there's a lot of things you could say about Pat Elliott. And, and one of the things, he's a heck of a good sport. I mean, he'll get in a boxing ring, he'll, he'll, you know, he'll go in a, in a lake, he'll do whatever needs to be done as mayor. I don't think he bakes cookies though, but, but he is, I think he's a man that, that came to this job, you know, without any political experience or any experience running for office. And he really grew into the job in terms of, you know, quite frankly, I think you really have to have a good heart to run and, and be elected to the city council. Because we, we really get to know our constituents and the, and constituents become our friends. And he has extended- And he has extended a lot of patience and a lot of support to a lot of folks that have come across this podium. And he has really established quite a rapport too. You know, he's, goes to these neighborhood meetings where people look to him. And, and being mayor, it's not easy to say, you know, well, I understand where you're coming from, but this has to be done because, and then he tells people why it has to be done. But he's willing to, to explain to folks, and what that gains him is credibility, and most important, it gains, gains him respect. And I think when you're an elected official, if you have respect from the public, you know, you, you know, you really, you really feel good because of, about your city. And now he's willing to trade all of that, but maybe not, because one of the things that we've been working on is having him move to the east side and maybe run for city council on the east side. It pays a little less, but it's, the fun is still around here to be had. But he has, he has chosen, you know, the love of his life, would like for, for him to retire at least part-time. And they're really great fans of, you know, going out to, you know, to Miami, to Hawaii, to Mazatlan, to wherever their son. And they have a great deal of fun together. And I think she wants to take advantage of, of the fact that they both have their health. And they want to make sure that they continue to, to do things together while they can. And, and they, they, they know how to have a lot of fun, and they know how to, how to really care for each other, and, and that's very, very important. And that signifies the way that Pat Elliott is with the public and with the staff, is that he's very much fits into what I call, you know, he's a respected part of our community. And I've grown to really like Pat a lot. I didn't at first, you know, which is, you know, it's, it's, if you know Pat, you can understand why, you know? He growls and, and frowns and all of that stuff, but, you know, he really wound up being such a nice guy. Because we all have coffee, well, we can all have coffee, coffee together, but one at a time, we'll have coffee with him. And he shares his life with us. He shares his concerns for the city. And he, he shares, he opens up his heart into what it's meant for him to be mayor of the city of Richfield and councilmember of the city of Richfield. So with a great deal of love, Mayor Elliott, we humbly thank you, and we appreciate, have appreciated you, and we don't want to lose you.
That's right. Thank you. I'm, I'm sitting here, believe it or not, somewhat speechless, which is really unusual. I, I would just suggest, and I think in deference to, to my wife, there was a suggestion a while back that I perhaps might want to reorder my priorities. And you've been married long enough, you know what that means, and you reorder your priorities. But I think, I think one of the things was, it was time to, to take a step back and, and not watch from afar, but let new blood, new voices, new people take over the direction of the city. And I couldn't have more confidence in, in the people that are going to stay here once Mike and I are gone, in keeping, keeping the city vibrant and alive, working with the new city manager and the staff in, in a collegial way like it's always been. And the only thing I would say to Edwina is that if I'm going to visit Mexico, I'm going to go back to Acapulco where I lived for a couple of years a while back and reorient myself to the ocean. So thank you very much, the words are much appreciated if, if somewhat undeserved.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to say the following to, to our youngster here, Michael Howard.
Thought I was going to get off late.
When, you know, when he first got elected, and then following that, when Maria got elected, I said, oh gosh, these kids, you know, I just couldn't believe it. I said, I, I said, well, they got elected, so we got to live with it. And, and quite frankly, it, they surprised me from the very, very beginning. Because they, you know, believe me, sometimes, you know, the agenda is like yay thick, because we get, we get all the drawings of, of the highways and the houses and the businesses that are expanding or, or, you know, the redevelopment, whatever. And I was surprised, they actually, at the very beginning, they actually studied their packet every single meeting. And then they would, they, if they had questions, they'd call the staff member that was in charge of whatever particular department. And then they went to whatever meetings were attached to a specific project. They would call, they would, because we can only communicate with one person regarding a council agenda. And they would ask questions, and I thought, well, jeez, you know, these, these kids have a lot of potential. And now we know that they, that they have, are, are moving on. But, you know, I always tease, because I, I was a member of the House, and I always tease Councilmember Howard, you know, because I still call him my kid. And, but he's got a little youngster, Calvin. And Calvin is a cute little boy. How old is he?
He's almost four.
And, and he probably wouldn't have won. He ran, he decided he was going to run for mayor, and then the, the state representative job came up. And so, you know, we did a little shuffling, and Maria didn't want to run for mayor, but somehow, you know, we're so persuasive that she didn't have a choice. So, you know, we, we never leave room for anybody to say no when we go after some, something. But Calvin was really instrumental in his dad winning the race for state representative because he did one of those little commercials where he's holding his boy and, and he's talking and, you know, I mean, most of the time, he's boring once you know, once you know him. And he's talking, and Calvin says, "Vote for my dad." And that, I, I heard, I don't know how many people say, that is the cutest commercial. We need young, young people, you know, with a young family to be in the legislator, legislature. Because right now, we have a lot of old fogies over there, and we do. So we expect that you're going to carry, you know, the water for Richfield in Bloomington, and that we're going to remain your favorite. Thank you for your service, and thank you, Pat, for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. And I was going to say this, but I just, you know, I will always appreciate the tips that I get from Councilmember Garcia, and I will depend on those in my new role as well. But, but one of those, just, I'll share a quick story. You know, I forget the issue, but I, that was before the council. I'd given some remarks and speech. In the next council meeting, Councilmember Garcia, you'd watch the replay, because that's something that you will do, is, is watch the, the council hearing and see if you missed anything or learned something new. And said, you know, Mike, you did a great job, you speak really well, it was a great speech, but you know what? You hold the pen with the flower in it here, and it's very distracting for people. And so I learned to, you know, take the, take the flower out of the pen. And it's just those little tips that I, I will miss greatly and I will still depend on. So I hope, hope I can still count on you. I know I can.
I have a tendency to think showing the flower was to make sure you were drawing the attention. But that's just me. Thank, thank you for all your comments. At this time, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Next item on the calendar is the Consent Calendar. Assistant City Manager, Ms. Dimitranko.
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council, tonight's consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved, and no further council action on the items as necessary. Councilmember Troutman, are you-
Yes, I just wanted to mention-
-intending to remove one item?
We, we were, and I, we discussed this with the mayor, we were just going to pull the Tourism Board Agenda item off the Consent Calendar.
Correct.
Okay.
You got motion?
Oh, I would move that we pull Agenda Item-
D.
D, off the Consent Calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item is removed.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will go through the remaining items, and then we'll consider Item D. Item A is consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing Minnesota Department of Transportation Agency Agreement Number 1032616 for federal participation in advanced construction related to the 77th Street underpass project. Item B is consideration of the adoption of a resolution approving a fair housing policy. Item C is consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing Richfield Public Safety Police Department to accept donations from the listed agencies, businesses, and private individuals for designated uses. Skipping to Item E, consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing an internal loan up to $900,000 to the liquor fund for costs incurred in the remodeling of city municipal stores. Item F, consideration of the approval of first reading of a transitory ordinance vacating a right-of-way easement on property at 1401 76th Street West, which is Seven Hills Academy, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for January 8th, 2019. And finally, Item G, consideration of the approval of the renewal of the 2019 licenses, licenses for on-sale 3.2% malt liquor, off-sale 3, 3.2% malt liquor, and taxi companies doing business in Richfield. These are licenses to operate in Richfield for taxi is Gold Star Taxi, seven vehicles, Airport Taxi, six vehicles. Licenses to sell 3.2% malt liquor include La Vaquita Short Stop, off sale, La Vaquita Two, off sale, Portland Food Mart, off sale, Pump &amp; Munch, off sale, Richfield Minoco, off sale, Speedway 4186, off sale, Speedway 4188, off sale, Speedway 4191, off sale, Speedway 4615, off sale, Target Corporation, off sale, Sandy's Tavern, off sale, and Vena Restaurant, on sale. And that concludes those items of tonight's Consent Calendar.
I would move the Consent Calendar with the exception of Item D.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent Calendar is passed. Councilmember Troutman, do you want to address Item D?
Thank you, Mayor. Item D is consideration for the adoption of a resolution appointing representatives to the Board of Directors for the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board, Incorporated. So the executive summary here is that in June 25th, 1990, the city council approved an ordinance to levy a 3% tax on the gross receipts of lodging from Richfield Hotels and Motels pursuant to Minnesota statutes, and establish the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board, Incorporated, or the RTPB. And the appointment of the directors was also part of the, the resolution. Currently, there are five director positions for the RTPB, and the term of each is three years. And initially this summer, we were going to have a work session to look, it's been, you know, several decades since we created the Tourism Board. We didn't, for a number of reasons, do that. The, the mayor and city manager and I, we had talked about adding several board members to kind of balance out. There's no specific appointment of any particular boards, but historically, it's been the hotel managers that have represented the board, or composed the, the majority of the board. We had looked at appointing an equal number of, of non-hotel, hotel members. And after talking with our president, who's in the audience, Gordon Vaseki, and thanks for, for coming tonight, there were some concerns about that, and there is a desire to, to study the matter further. But as President Vaseki pointed out, we have this impending deadline coming up with a three-year appointment. So I just wanted to, I'm going to support the measure, but I just wanted to, to put on the record, even though this is a three-year term, I'm not, I'm, well, I'm open to supporting the, the board for three years. We really want to study this, be able to take a look at this board. And we have the right to, to remove or appoint board, board members with or without cause. So, because we don't want to leave the board in a lurch, I, I want to support, support this measure. But I also wanted to just start this conversation that hopefully we can continue in the spring. And I also want to thank not just President Vaseki, but also Katie, what's her last name?
Epler.
Epler, who's our, our Director of the Tourism Board. And as we've gotten to know more about what they're doing, they're already turning the ship in lots of really helpful ways for the city, and so we're looking forward to participating in that. One question I had before we, we have the vote, we have at President Vaseki's invitation, the opportunity to appoint an independent board member to the Tourism Board. I was wondering if it might be helpful for us to do that while we're interviewing all the other board members. We don't have a mechanism established for that board member, so I don't know if this is the appropriate, or we can talk about it another time, or what do you, what do you think?
Councilmember Troutman, I'm wondering if you first want to have a study session about the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board?
Yes.
And then make that determination after you've had that discussion as a council?
Great.
Sounds good.
And then I just want to get a little bit understanding, more clear understanding from Councilmember Troutman. I know that the President, President Vaseki came to us and had made some changes to the, the board, addressing some of those, those questions that were brought up. So I guess just being clear about what the purpose of the, the study session is, because I thought a lot of those things were addressed already.
No, he declined, he declined to address those, or he, he felt uncomfortable with the solution as it was proposed by staff. So we currently have the board that is funded by the tax of the hotels, and currently, the hotels distribute those funds as they see fit with the, with the guidance of the president and with staff. And so I think there's an opportunity to bring some additional voices to that conversation. And so-
I just want to have more understanding of, of, of the issue and the concerns before we have a discussion about making any changes.
Oh, absolutely. And that's, would that, that, the study session would be the, the context in which to, to have that? So I, if there are no further comments, I would move we adopt a resolution appointing representatives to the Board of Directors of the Tourism Promotion Board, Inc.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed. Next item also belongs to Councilmember Troutman. However, before we get started on that, I was handed another open registration card that I didn't get to, to open the session, and I let the individuals talk about Item 7. So I would ask Luciana Peterson to, to come up, and if you still feel like speaking. Once again, please sign in, and you've got approximately three minutes to speak. Great, thank you. Into the mic, please.
My name is Luciana, Lucy, L-U-C-I, for short, Luciana Peterson, and I live at Fraser Sheridan Court, which is at 2500 West 66th Street. For those of you who are not familiar with Sheridan Court, it's an independent living apartment, building owned by Fraser. In order to qualify to live in our building, you must have a disability. Sheridan Court consists of 30 apartments. It's HUD and Section 8, accessible and- It's HUD and Section 8, accessible and affordable. Some of the types of disabilities represented are people with physical disabilities, including wheelchair users, people with autism, such as myself, Down Syndrome, as well as many other diagnoses. For instance, I'm autistic, Jewish, transgender, live with mental illness, mostly anxiety and depression, and make use of SSDI and a caddy waiver. I was on a waiting list for two and a half years before I was able to move there. Sheridan Court is a great place to live and provides us with a safe, supportive, and accessible environment that is incredibly hard to find anywhere else in the Twin Cities. I have only had the pleasure of living in Richfield for six months, but Sheridan Court has been a lifeline for me. The two and a half years I was on the waiting list, I lived in a place that was not safe for me. Building a hundred and eighty-three unit apartment building next to Sheridan Court would put me and the other residents at risk. Just one example, I have sensory integration disorder, as most people with autism do. Due to my sensory integration disorder, I have a very low tolerance for high-pitched noises. This means that when a window is open that faces 24/7, beeping crosswalk sticks. That is literally painful, and all I can hear. Many of us walk to CBS to get our prescriptions. Currently, we only have to cross Queen Street. If you allowed them to extend Russell all the way to 66, that would be one more street we'd have to cross, with a big increase in traffic. That makes it more dangerous for those of us with disabilities to cross the intersections. Interacting with people in the community is a challenge for some of us. Adding a hundred and eighty-three new units would mean way more pedestrian, pedestrians and cars for us to navigate. Many of us have anxiety disorders, such as myself, and adding this many people next door to us, as well as putting us through the, the several-year length of the construction, means that we'll have to suffer through the noise, and no doubt, plenty of physical barriers. The people who live in our neighborhood are already used to interacting with the people in our building. Who would educate all of these new neighbors on how to interact with people with autism and other disabilities, not to mention the construction workers? This is currently a safe place for us, as safe, as few places are. Lastly, we do not want to be disregarded when deciding how this city allows any new construction. Please take this into consideration about how you go about doing this. I beg you not to make a hasty decision. Please take a respectful amount of time to really listen to all of the residents in this area, and try to read, reach out to those not here tonight. Contemplate how it will affect each and every one of us. All of the people give a notice about this meeting in the mail deserve at least that much. And I offer a welcoming hand to anyone here tonight, in the audience, or on the board, to see how great Frasier Sheridan Court truly is for those of us with disabilities. And just contact me, and I would be perfectly happy to give anybody a tour of this great building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, thank you. This is a consideration of the land use approvals related to a proposal for a hundred and eighty-three unit apartment building on the north side of 66th Street between Queen and Russell Avenue. The future address would be 2400 66th Street West. The Broadway Investors LLC, the developer, has submitted an application for a planned unit development of a hundred and eighty-three unit apartment building on the north side of 66th Street between Queen and Russell Avenues. This site has been designated for high-density housing for many years, dating all the way back to the 1982 Comprehensive Plan. The developer first presented preliminary concepts to the Planning Commission and the city council at the work session on August 20th, 2018. Policymakers and council indicated a desire for the developer to seek neighborhood input, to consider the connectivity from the neighborhood to 66th Street, and the potential impact of headlights entering and exiting the parking area. At September, the September 8th meeting, the neighborhood open house, the developer presented revised plan that reoriented the parking entrance away from the adjacent neighborhood, and introduced a roadway connection via Russell Avenue. Based on the feedback from these two meetings, the developer submitted preliminary plans for a four-story, 179-unit apartment building for staff review in early October. Incorporating staff's technical and design feedback, they were, excuse me, they revised their, their plans, they were submitted, along with land use, land use application on October 25th. These plans were presented at Second Neighborhood Open House on November 4th. After incorporating additional suggestions from the neighborhood and staff, the developer submitted revised plans for consideration by the Planning Commission. Excuse me. After, after taking testimony at public hearing on November 26th, the Planning Commission recommended an approval of the proposed development with a stipulation of lowering the height from four stories to three stories along 65th and a half. In exchange, the Planning Commission consented to building height increase to five stories along the south and east elevations where it's not adjacent to single-family homes. The developer submitted these revised plans to the council for consideration that meet this condition. While earlier plans included 179 dwelling units, the revised plans include 183 units. The change from a four-story building to one that is a three-story building, and a five-story, has five-story sections necessitates a change in construction type, which increases some of the costs. The inclusion of four additional units will help to offset the increased project costs. Excuse me. The current, the current proposal is a result of an initial, of a process that has allowed for feedback from both the council, and staff, and our commission, and our neighbors. Staff finds that the, the proposed project meets the intent of the Comprehensive Plan and the code requirements, and therefore recommends approval of the proposed project. And I think, before, before I say anything else, that was a more lengthy than usual memo, but it was really well put together, and I wanna thank staff, and I know Matt Brillhart, and Associate Planner, Melissa Pellman, you both put a lot of time, and, and your whole team, and John Stark, everybody put a lot of effort into this project, but particularly pulling all that together and kind of giving us some context, I really appreciate that. So, thank you. Are there any, any comments from council?
I would just suggest, I know I was at the Planning Commission, and I got the minutes, and I wanna, well, from my perspective, there are a number of questions that were posed, and both Ms. Pellman and Mr. Brillhart, I think, went through and answered every one of them, and, and gave some context and some, some support to it. I, I'm gonna put Councilmember Garcia somewhat on the spot, because I asked staff to provide me with the council meetings when the Fraser House was originally proposed back in 1986. There was three council meetings that were public meetings, and looking back, I would expect everybody in this room, including the people that, that are here tonight, that live in close proximity to the new project, about how strongly there are protests from the neighborhood about Fraser House. Councilmember Garcia was on it, and I will say that the notes, just like they are now, don't reference some of the hostility that some of the community members had, because of the nature of the clientele that was proposed to live at Fraser House. So, that, that's aside from the people that were worried about the height of the building, the additional traffic, the additional impact on the single-family residents around it. And I would suggest, if you ask the neighbors, and I'm not trying to make any examples of everything, Fraser is a valuable, it was a valuable addition, continues to be. And as Mr., as Lucy said, it's a safe haven for, for people to come in there and, and need some additional help or some special needs. So, I, I think what we need to do in looking at this, and I know there's concern about the height, which has been moderated and everything, I'm, I'm just pointing it out that, that Fraser is part of the neighborhood. My office is directly across the street from the building site and Fraser. And the, the, the whole concept of the neighborhood, and bringing in additional people to live here, to work here, to, to frequent our, our businesses, I'm, I'm hoping, and I sincerely believe that, that, that if it passes, and once it's built, it's gonna have the same type of impact, and increase the, the neighborliness, the collaborative efforts, and everything else in that neighborhood around 66 and Penn. So, I'm just pointing out, Fraser, that that got some serious pushback. And it's there, and it's a welcome addition to the neighborhood, and I would, I would subject to you that, that the new development going across the street is due to do the same. So, that's all I've got to say.
I just have a few questions. I was jotting some of the questions down that residents raised in the public comment period. First, for staff, there were several questions about, related to street parking, and stop signs, and traffic management, those kinds of things. Could you speak to what sort of studies went into that on the front end? And I know in other developments where it's, the exact traffic patterns aren't 100% clear, you know, there's an open, has been an openness to look at potential solutions or remedies if a problem persists. But could you speak to what has been thus far kind of investigated and studied in terms of the parking and traffic pieces of this?
Yes, Councilmember Howard, there's an extensive traffic study attached to your report. It's one of the more, most thorough traffic studies we've, we've actually seen. It does a good job of predicting the increase in traffic on all of the adjacent streets, and those traffic levels remain very low compared to other streets that come off of 66th Street. Additionally, our transportation engineers have attended a number of the open houses. We've spoken with the residents. Those streets are narrow. Our Public Works Department has reviewed them in terms of plowing and maintenance. There will be restricted parking on Russell, or I'm sorry, the extension of Russell, south of 65th and a half. North of that, the residents currently enjoy being able to park on the street. That's a situation that we'll continue to monitor, and the traffic engineers have looked into that. The idea being that we don't want to propose a solution when we're not sure of what the problem will be. We don't wanna prohibit parking for those residents if there is no overflow parking. And again, like the staff report says, this project is actually parked at a higher parking ratio than most of the projects that have come in over the last five to 10 years.
And you beat me to my next question, it was about those ratios, 'cause that was a question as well. Thank you. There was a few questions that, that might be for the developer about how many occupants are expected in each apartment, and sort of questions about how, expectation for, I guess, demand, you know, how, years out, and things like that. Would you be able to speak to, to some of those questions that were raised? Yeah, that'd be great.
Good evening. My name's David Lundey, and I live at 20, 2048 Lower St. Dennis Drive in St. Paul. To answer your questions...
Can, can, excuse me, can you move your, the microphone over here to the higher? There you go.
Sure.
Thank you.
There we go. So, specifically, number of units in the building. When we look at it, we look at, for our studio apartments, there'd be one person. Our one-bedroom would be one-person bedroom, or our den plus, or our one-bedroom plus den, we consider two, and two bedrooms would be two. Just to come up with an average count of about 250 tops, which would, going back to your parking question, would be, result in, I believe, effectively, a one-to-one parking ratio.
Okay. And you've spoken to this when it's been, not before, but I think it's important to the demand piece of it. What are your expectations for the demand for housing like this in Richfield?
I believe that we spoke to the current demand for housing at a couple of the sessions, both the P&amp;Z and our, our planning sessions, work sessions, I believe. And at that time, it was one to 2% is the current vacancy rate in Richfield. And I don't have in front of me right now, but historically, vacancy rates in the primary market area have not been above 7% historically. And so, we don't anticipate, I believe, the number was two-thirds full. We don't anticipate that. Our pro forma is at 5%, which is a standard median between over and under supply.
Thank you. Just while you're up there, we heard from a resident at the Fraser facility, and the concerns that are raised are really important, I think. And I would say, call out for a, a very specific, and kind of over-the-above outreach to the residents in that facility. Is that something you would commit to in terms of updating that community about timelines, both for the construction, and, you know, potential hours of operation, noise, things like that? In terms of regular community meetings at the facility there for those residents, and then updates throughout the process? Is that something you'd be comfortable committing to?
If I could go through those line-by-line items to commit. But I do want to say that we have been, we have had a great working relationship with Fraser since before this, well before us coming to the city to speak. And we've worked in collaboration with them with the expansion of Russell, and even to the point where we have talked with them and our architect, and, and to establish in special no-barrier units in our facility.
Thank you for that. I guess the specific request would be meetings on-site there with, you know, I, I'm not asking for like, one every, a set amount of weeks, but you, you do at least some level of meetings at the facility for the, the residents there.
Sure. And I, I think, as, as we've shown, we had a neighborhood meeting before we were required to have one, just to get an initial neighborhood response, and start to understand what the neighborhood concerns were. So, we plan to continue with that, and be a good community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, thank you. I just had a couple of questions from, from residents, or maybe, maybe just, just one. I just wanted to confirm, I thought I had a memory of this, that in the Chamberlain Apartments, when, as we had a commitment from the developer to, to do an inspection of their surrounding properties, and document the, the structural integrity of those properties, and then, as they began the, the, the construction, if there were any concerns, that, that those would be documented ahead of time. Did I understand that right? We're doing that again, this, for, for this, this project?
Yes, Councilmember Troutman, that came up at the Planning Commission meeting, and that has been added as a stipulation. It's included in the resolution before you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Then I would, we have two, two, two motions to, to consider. I would move we approve the ordinance amending Appendix 1 of the Richfield City Code to change the zoning designation of two blocks, or Blocks 2 and 3, Harry Tickner subdivision of Lot 15, and, excuse me, Lot 15, Richfield Gardens, from high-density residential MR3 and single-family residential R to planned multifamily residential PMR.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I would also move the adoption of a resolution approving a planned unit development, conditional use permit, and final development for plan for a 183-unit apartment development on the north side of 66th Street between Queen Avenue and Russell Avenue. Future address being 2400 66th Street West.
I would second, but I just have one comment before a final vote. I, I just wanna highlight, for me, why I'm supporting this, in that we do need an all-of-the-above housing approach in Richfield, and the 1% vacancy rate of multi-unit, or for, for renters is important, and I think adding a level of density like this, where it could fit within the character of our community, and where it's set forth in our comp plan, makes sense. The one comment I'll make, and this is kind of for the folks that'll be on the council here in the years to come, and opportunities to connect with at the state level, too, is this is, you know, 100% market rate proposal, and some that we've seen, like Chamberlain, for example, where there was a gap in funding, and there was public insistence evolved, involved, you know, we've had a plan now formalized to include a degree of affordability. And so, you know, this is a proposal that is 100% market rate. I think we need market rate, we also need affordable housing as well. And so, I just put this out there, as we get development proposals in the future, I think it's gonna be incumbent on looking at what solutions and partnerships there at all, at all levels of government, so that we're addressing our need for market rate and affordable multi-tenant housing as well. and affordable multi-tenant housing as well. But in the overall, when you look at the needs for our community and the prospect of welcoming new neighbors to our community, makes this, I think, the right approach.
I wanted to make a couple of comments too. I wanted to just say thank you to Commissioner Penn for all the work that he has been doing with the residents and coming up with a proposal that really, that three to five step down, I think, when it's across the street from single-family homes is extremely important and is something that on the east side, we've been facing as well, is having three-story apartments built in the backyards of, of our homes. And I, I just want to commend you for putting that proposal in, for working with the residents on several modifications that are going to be improvements and also knowing this from the work that we've been doing on the east side of the community, it's extremely important that the developer continue to have regular meetings and communication with the residents and with Frazier and have clear, consistent communication and that folks know what is going on and that everything is done possible to minimize the disruption of, of community members as construction moves forward.
If I may, and this is somewhat of a segue to Councilmember Howard's in terms of, of market rate and affordable. One thing that you and your development team have brought forward is a housing need that may be even more necessary than affordable and that's barrier-free. And it's the first one we've had here where you've done that on your own and it's part incorporated into it and, and it's, it's not spoken about. The, the, and I don't want to say this, the hot bite on is affordable housing and that's wonderful and I think we need it. But to be able to provide barrier-free, which is ADA, it's ADA and it puts it out there and you brought it by yourself, so I really appreciate that. And that needs to be part of the conversation going forward also. So, so that was something that, that you didn't trumpet, you don't, I didn't even know about it until I started looking at it and I think one of your partners mentioned that that was incorporated into design. I think that's just absolutely outstanding, so thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe if I could just say a couple of things briefly about our residents, I want to thank, just, just like the mayor said, thank you for making those, those zero-barrier apartments. But it's been in the, I think in the last year that community members have really begun to make their voices heard around those issues. And this is a great example of why it's important to make your voices heard. Also, appreciate, appreciated so much about the staff memo, just highlighting all the different ways in which nobody gets everything that they want, but you guys have made some, some significant changes. You flipped the property around, you've adjusted things, you, and I appreciate that. And it's a better project because our commission took a hard look at it. Our neighbors gave you some strong feedback and you've worked well with council, so I just want to, I want to thank you for all that and thank our residents and thank our commissioners for working hard on this, even if, even if there are still parts of the project that people aren't happy with. I really appreciate that process. Think we have a motion? Needs a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Next item on the agenda is calls for a public hearing, consideration of the approval of the transitory ordinance vacating Queen Avenue and a portion of Russell Avenue between 65th and a Half Street and 66th Street. Broadway Investors LLC has submitted applications requesting approval of an apartment building on the north side of 66th Street between Queen and Russell Avenues. On November 26, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the proposed development with additional conditions. The council will consider approval of the planned unit development application as a separate agenda item that is not subject to an additional public hearing. In conjunction with the planned unit development application, the developer is requesting to vacate Queen Avenue between 65th and a Half Street and 66th Street. In exchange for removing Queen Avenue through the site, the developer would extend Russell, Russell Avenue approximately 200 feet to the south, intersecting, intersecting 66th Street. Without the vacation of Queen Avenue, three parcels that are guided for high-density residential development would remain on the east side of the road. These three parcels are on their own, are unlikely to be redeveloped due to their size and unusual shape. The proposed change in roadway alignments would allow a development on the combined site to move forward while maintaining local traffic circulation via the Russell Avenue extension. Russell Avenue would include a tree-lined sidewalk between 65th and a Half and 66 Streets. The proposed roadway changes have been reviewed by the Richfield and Hanupan County Public Works Departments. Richfield engineering staff will work with the developer on the specific design of the Russell Avenue extension. This is a public meeting. Anybody care to speak up to the dais and, and offer opinions, suggestions, recommendations or any other comments? Once again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone care to step up and offer comments in regards to the item under consideration?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. At this time, I would move to approve a transitory ordinance vacating Queen Avenue and a portion of Russell Avenue between 65th and a Half Street and 66th Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The closure is approved. Thank you. Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez has the next item on the agenda.
The next item is a public hearing in consideration of the adoption of a resolution approving a preliminary plat of the Cedar Point 2 addition that will combine 27 parcels and vacated 64th Street right away into five parcels in order to allow construction of a previously approved housing project. In conjunction with an application for a planned unit development, Cedar Point 2, NHH Properties LLC must replat the site. Approval of a preliminary plat is required prior to the issuance of building permits. A final plat is required prior to the issuance of certificates of occupancy. At the time the preliminary plat application was submitted, the applicant had been unable to come to an agreement with two property owners within the project boundary. The proposed preliminary, preliminary plat does not include these two parcels and the design of the project will allow construction to work around them. In the past few days, however, the applicant has signed a purchase agreement with one of the remaining homeowners and is optimistic about purchasing the last home. If the final property is not purchased prior to the critical construction deadlines, the applicant will return to the city for approval of an amended site plan that excludes town homes on that property. This possibility was discussed with policymakers when land use approvals were considered. Ultimately, the final plat would be brought back to the city council for consideration at a later date. The final plat would reflect a final property configuration. So any comments from staff on this?
No. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the approvals for the planning and zoning aspects of this have already been granted. This is just the plating of the property.
So this is, this is just a timing issue, so isn't the project itself, the proposal's not going to change in relation to this? It would just be timing?
Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez, the manner in which it could change is dependent on the outcome of the negotiations for the last home. The plat, as it stands before you now, does exclude the two homes that they don't have under contract. So when they come back for the final plat, it will reflect the ultimate development parcel. They held off on the, on the plat as long as they could to negotiate with property owners. They feel that they're at a point now though, that they need to go ahead and, and get this approval from you, that seek this approval from you, so that they can get underway with construction. They're hoping to break ground on this project later this week, I believe.
So does that mean there's a possibility of less townhomes on the site?
Correct. If they were to miss, if they were to not be able to buy this last piece of property, it would decrease the townhome count by eight to 16 units, depending on the precise layouts.
And then does that affect the inclusionary housing policy work that, I know they, I think they were over?
Yeah, that would, that would not affect the inclusionary housing piece of it.
Oh, it doesn't, okay. That was, that was my main concern. Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody here to comment on this issue? This is a public hearing. Is anybody here to comment on this issue?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
I would like to make the motion to adopt a resolution for a preliminary plat of the Cedar Point 2 addition.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed. Item number 10 is Councilmember Howard.
This is a public hearing in consideration of the approval of a second reading of an ordinance amendment to the Richfield City Code Appendix D Fee Schedule and adopt a resolution approving summary publication of said ordinance. The proposed ordinance would revise fees related to the cert, related to certain building permit and planning and zoning application fees. City staff conducts an annual review to determine whether its fees for permits and services are appropriate. Among other, among other criteria, the intent of the review is to determine whether the fees collected are adequate to cover the staff time and costs related to performing the services associated with those fees. At the same time, staff tries to ensure that costs for city services are in line with our peer communities and are not excessive or onerous. Fees related to building permits, zoning and other land use permits are established by Appendix D of the city's code. Staff is recommending the following changes to the fees and permits included in this section. For building and related permits, staff is proposing increasing the minimum fee for permits from $35 to $40. Also, the city does not have a specific electrical permit fee for solar photovoltaic systems and staff is proposing a fee table that is used by Minnesota's Department of Labor for state electrical permits based on the size of the proposed system. For planning and zoning fees, fees for complex land use applications have not been raised since at least 2005. Staff has proposed to increase both minimum and maximum fees to better align with the costs related to the processing of these applications. Minimum fees for planned unit development applications have been increased from 500 to 1,000 and maximum from 3,500 to 5,000. The sliding fee scale will remain, thus larger projects that require more staff time will continue to pay more than the smaller, simpler projects. Variance fees have been adjusted as well, better reflecting actual staff time and costs. Residential variance application fees have been increased from 250 to 350 and non-residential from 450 to 500. Additional minor adjustments have been made and are reflected in the proposed ordinance amendment. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Is there anyone here to speak for the public hearing? Going once, going twice.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Before I move this, I just want to make one item. This is an example of how, I'm not going to be here soon, so I better get my comments in. A few months ago, we had a resident that came here to speak to us about what she felt was an excessive fee for massage license. And based on the information that she provided, I, it appears to me that we are out of line in terms of the notion of trying to be in line with our peer communities. And I think it's just an issue worth further study, maybe a work session. I know it's, it's not straightforward. There's significant public safety issues at play, but just going to throw it out there that I think it's an issue worth further study and maybe a work session. Look at, just proposing work sessions for, for you all. I just wanted to throw that out there.
I, I can't help but jump on the wagon and this is more directed at the new city manager working with the financial director. I've talked with, I talked with the city manager, Devich, and, and our financial manager on several occasions in regards to, and this kind of ties in with, with Councilmember Troutman's desire about bringing some of the indie restaurants and everything that are a little dissatisfied with the taxing in St. Paul and Minneapolis and setting up a restaurant row out here. I've had a couple holders of full liquor licenses, bar licenses, open till two licenses and somehow we managed to put a different tax on each license. He can't figure out if I have a full liquor license and now you can serve on Sunday, why I need a separate license for Sunday? Why do I need a license for nine tables that, or nine chairs at the bar that I can serve food at? It should be, one license should cover all and more importantly, the license is a set figure. It doesn't matter if you have volume at like Hula Hands or you have seating for 20. And it seems somewhat disparate that, that, that somebody that, that has $150,000 in, in liquor retail revenue for a year is paying the same as Hula Hands at 400,000. It doesn't make any sense, so I suggest that work session ought to go from soup to nuts, including building permits and everything else. But let's take a look at, at the licensing on some of the restaurateurs that are paying multiple tax, multiple funds for multiple licenses that accomplish the exact same thing. So I think there has to be a better, better way to do that. And I know that, that Mr. Stark is on, on base with me that, that sometime going back and looking at these, we realize that one size doesn't fit all. And, and you know, break them down, you can't sit down in one session and address them all, but I think they all ought to be looked at and made more applicable to, to our businesses and, and the size and, and their revenues. So, so that's just a suggestion for, for Councilmember Howard's work sessions. Thank you.
And, and I would just add, to put the nail in my coffin, but you know, there was a question I had of what it's like, what our fees are like in comparison to other neighboring cities because we, I mean, we are all competing for, for business to come into our communities, so I was just curious how these fees and fines compare to, to our peer cities and our neighbors.
Yes, councilmembers, again, what we're talking about tonight is only related to building permits and planning and zoning fees. And I would tell you that the actual costs that are incurred are far, far less than the, the fees that are proposed. Sorry? The, the costs, I'm sorry, are far, far more than the fees that are imposed for the permits in part for two reasons. One is, as it stated, you know, to be at a competitive disadvantage to have fees that were out of line with our peer cities. And for bigger projects, we do believe our fees are in line with our peer cities. For smaller projects, our fees, I believe, are still quite a bit lower than our peer cities. And I'm fine with that because the smaller projects are primarily Richfield homeowners coming into full permits. And at some point in time, every, we, we hope every Richfield homeowner is going to be doing some work to their home. Of course, when a fee is less than the cost that we charge for it, that, that we incur for it, that means the taxpayers have to pick up the, the difference. In the case of people doing work to their single-family homes, again, that's a policy decision that you make, but our recommendation would be that, that's okay, that everybody in the city of Richfield at some point in time is going to be making improvements and we don't want to have the permit fees at the time they're doing those improvements to be onerous and to be a burden to getting that work done.
I think we've suggested five new work sessions this. I think we've, we've scared Councilmember-elect Supple out of the chambers.
Like, I had to laugh at, at Mayor Elliott coming up with his own, you know, I suppose between the two of us, we could, we probably could put up, pick up our list of things we haven't, haven't quite gotten to that we, we'd like to, but with that, I will move approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending to Richfield City Code Appendix D, our fee schedule, related to building permit and planning and zoning application fees and adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending Richfield City Code Appendix D, our fee schedule, related to boat, building permits and planning and zoning application fees.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's passed. Next item on the agenda is Councilmember Garcia.
Okay, this is a public hearing in consideration of the approval of the renewal of 2019 pawnbroker and second-hand goods dealer license for Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated at 7529 Lindell Avenue South. And as per usual, our public safety director made sure that, that the applicant satisfied all the requirements that were needed for the issuance of the license. And that means that the license fees have been paid, real estate taxes have been paid and our current $5,000 bond has been submitted and the environmental health staff has received no complaints regarding the Met. staff has received no complaints regarding the Met Pawn, Metro Pawn and Gun in the previous years. And, and I know these are really good folks, very few people ever go to, into a pawn shop, but it's, it's a Richfield business, and when you go in there just to look around or whatever, you know, I went in there, I took in my six shooter because I wanted the clip fixed, and they did everything they could, and they couldn't, they couldn't fix it. But talk about nice folks, that, you know, they, they really, you know, they really did their best, so, um, this is a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak?
Thank you very much. I'm Mark Nichols, I'm the owner and the applicant here, and Jared Coontz has been my general manager there for the last twenty years, and I'd just like to take advantage of the opportunity on license renewal to introduce myself to the mayor and council. We have an incoming, incoming mayor this year, and I believe we have a brand-new or very-new city manager, and we'd just like to be familiar in case an issue should arise that you'd feel comfortable contacting us and know who we are. So, I don't really have a statement to make, I just want to make an introduction of myself and JR as my general manager.
So if I were to take my six shooter in, you know, you have somebody new, so they might know how to fix it.
Uh, we, we would make sure if we could find somebody to fix that. We don't do the actual gun firearms repairs because of, for product liability reasons.
Well, this is, this is, uh, not a real, it's a six shooter, and I've got two that go in my holster.
Now, cap guns, cap guns we would work on, because there, there's no liability issue on those.
Well, this, this, what, these are, I use these for skits, so.
Bring, bring them in, show them to JR, he'd, he'd be happy to take a look at them for you.
Okay, super, thank you.
I would like to thank you. It's my recollection that every time your license comes up, you, you come in, you reintroduce yourself, make sure that, that we can put a face with a name, and I appreciate that, it shows concern about your business and concern about the city, and, and you just want to make sure you're present if, in fact, there's any questions or anything that goes on, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is the kind of license where you should know who you're issuing it to, so I, I, just something we think that council and mayor staff deserve.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, that's a really, really good point. Anyone else wanting to speak at the public hearing? Anyone else?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
So I will move to approve the renewal of the twenty-nineteen pawnbroker and secondhand goods dealer license for Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated at seventy-five twenty-nine Lindale Avenue South.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
License passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next two staff reports are the public hearing in consideration of the approval of the renewal of the two thousand and nineteen Club On Sale Intoxicating and Sunday Liquor Licenses. The council will be conducting single public hearings for the licenses under various categories and consider approval of the licenses with a single motion. I will open the public hearing for the renewal of the two thousand and nineteen Club On Sale Intoxicating and Sunday Liquor Licenses for Fred Babcock VFW Post Number five-five-five-five DBA Four Nickels Food and Drink, sixty-seven fifteen Lakeshore Drive, and Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post Number four-thirty-five sixty-five oh-one Portland Avenue South. If there are any members of the audience who'd like to speak to either of these items, please come to the podium, sign in and state your name and address and which item you are speaking to. You will have three minutes to address the council. This is a public meeting, anybody wish to speak, please come forward. Anyone have comments? Please step up. Sign in and then give us your name and address, please.
My name is Miguel Fernandez, um, is this for like all the liquor licenses?
No, no, they're, they're, they're going to be serials, so when, yeah, when, when yours comes up, you'll hear it called.
I'll come back when we're up.
All right, great, thank you. Anybody else?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
I would move to approve the renewal of the two thousand and nineteen Club On Sale Intoxicating and Sunday Liquor Licenses for Four Nickels Food and Drink and Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post Number four-thirty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Licenses are approved. Next item on the agenda is for Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
I'm sad to say my favorite restaurant, El Tejaban, is not on my list, somebody else has it.
I get it, I get it.
Fine, okay.
Additional names and addresses for you.
All right, fine, I guess you can have it. The next nine staff reports are for the public hearing in consideration of the approval of the renewal of the twenty-nineteen On Sale Wine and three-point-two-percent malt liquor licenses. The council will conduct a single public hearing for the licenses and consider approval of the licenses with a single motion. I will open the public hearing for renewal of the twenty-nineteen On Sale Wine and three-point-two-percent malt liquor licenses for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill, seventy-six forty-four Lindale Avenue South, Devani's Inc., doing business as Devani's Pizza and Hot Hoagies at sixty-three forty-five Penn Avenue South, Joy's Potaya Thai Restaurant, doing business as Joy Potaya's Thai Restaurant, seventy-five forty-five Lindale Avenue South, LRFC, doing business as Local Roots Food and Coffee at eight-one-seven sixty-sixth Street East, Los Sanchez Taqueria Two, doing business as Los Sanchez Taqueria Two, sixty-sixth Street West, My Burger Operations, doing business as My Burger, sixty-five fifty-five Lindale Avenue South, Minnesota Junior Hockey Group, doing business as Minnesota Magicians at the Richfield Ice Arena at six-three-six E sixty-sixth Street, Patrick's French Bakery, doing business as Patrick's Bakery and Cafe, twenty-nine twenty-eight sixty-sixth Street West, and Henry, Henry Tao, doing business as Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant at twenty-nine-ten sixty-sixth Street West. If there are any members of the audience that would like to speak to any of these items, please do, this is a public hearing. Is anybody here, would anybody here like to speak on any of these items at the public hearing?
Can you speak?
No, that's, no, it's not, he's not on my list. He's not on my list, somebody else's list. Looks like maybe Mike's.
Oh, that's right, aquí está.
Okay.
Move to close the public hearing? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
And I would like to make the motion to approve the renewal of the twenty-nineteen On Sale Wine and three-point-two-percent malt liquor licenses for Chipotle Mexican Grill, Devani's Pizza and Hot Hoagies, Joy's Potaya Thai Restaurant, Local Roots Food and Coffee, Los Sanchez Taqueria, My Burger, Minnesota Magicians at the Richfield Ice Arena, Patrick's Bakery and Cafe, and Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Licenses are passed. Next item is Councilmember Howard.
I have the next nine staff reports, numbers twenty-three through thirty-one on the agenda for the public hearing in consideration of the approval of the renewal of the twenty-nineteen On Sale Intoxicating and Sunday Liquor Licenses. The council will conduct the single hearing for the licenses and consider approval of the license with a single motion. Open the public hearing for the renewal of the twenty-nineteen On Sale Intoxicating and Sunday Liquor Licenses for Frenchman's Pub Incorporated, doing business as Frenchman's at fourteen-hundred-sixty-sixth Street East, El Tejaban Mexican Restaurant LLC, doing business as El Tejaban Mexican Grill, sixty-five nineteen Nicollet Avenue South, Thompson's Fireside Pizza, doing business as Fireside Foundry at sixty-seven thirty-sixth Penn Avenue South, Lindale Smokehouse LLC, doing business as Lindale Smokehouse at seventy-seven forty-five Lindale Avenue South, VPC Richfield LLC, doing business as Giordano's of Richfield at three-thousand-sixty-sixth Street West, Wiltshire Restaurants LLC, doing business as Hula Hands Restaurant and Bar at sixty-six oh-one Lindale Avenue South, Paizan Incorporated, doing business as Khan's Mongolian Barbecue at five-hundred-seventy-eighth Street East, Lynn sixty-five LLC, doing business as Lynn sixty-five Kitchen and Bar at sixty-four thirty-nine Lindale Avenue South, and Pizza Luce Seven Incorporated, doing business as Pizza Luce at eight-hundred-sixty-sixth Street West. If there are any members of the audience that would like to speak to any of these items, please come to the podium, sign in, state your name, address, and which item you're here to speak for, and you have three minutes to address the council. And with that, I'll open the public hearing.
Hello again, yeah, my name is Miguel Fernandez, seven-two-four-four York Avenue South, Edina. I'm trying to get closer to Richfield, I'm out right on the border, I live in, next time.
You're making your way.
Those new apartments, maybe.
Come home, come home.
Yes, um, yeah, I would just like to thank the city council, the new mayors, everyone who's leaving, thanks for the work. We, I always tell my friends, if you want to see where the tax is going, where, what city council does, try to open a business, you'll, you'll learn very quickly that there's a lot of people who do work other than, you know, the business that's behind it. So I'm here to thank you guys on behalf of my family, it's been ten years in Richfield now, we're really proud to be here. I always tell my friends, you know, you know, I don't drink and drive, I don't do all these things, because I want to own a liquor license one day in Richfield or, you know, anywhere else. It's really important to have a clean background, it's really important. I can attest to maybe a little bit, the license fees are, are high, but that keeps, you know, reputable businesses coming, you know, you don't want a lot of liquor licenses, and you know, but, uh, yeah, thank you again, and we're, we're hopefully going to do another good year and keep responsible, it's a lot of responsibility, and we see a lot more business coming in, look, competitors, but we're here to stay and we're going to keep it responsible here in Richfield, so thank you again.
Thank you for coming.
Señor, yo nomás quería decirle que usted sirven una comida muy rica, muy deliciosa, y siempre, siempre están listos para servir la gente con, con una sonrisa, y eso es muy importante, y le agradecemos por, por eso. I'd like to thank you for the food you serve, it's really delicious, and, you know, with that little sauce, oh, it's perfect. Anyway, you know, I just, it's a restaurant that you'll want to go to more than once, and usually I, I can't do that, but with this one I do. And you're also always are very attentive to your customers with a smile on your face, and, and I know that, you know, for people that like to have, like, a small get-together, you can always get a private party in there, so we appreciate your establishment.
Thank you, Garcia.
Thank you for being such an important community partner and builder, too. We, you can go into your restaurant any day of the week, and it's full of families and huge tables of families, and you've always been supportive to Richfield, so thank you for that, Miguel.
Uh, is there anyone else here for the public hearing? Anyone else here?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
And then I will bring the motion to approve the renewal of the twenty-nineteen On Sale Intoxicating and Sunday Liquor Licenses for Frenchman's, El Tejaban Mexican Grill, Fireside Foundry, Lindale Smokehouse, Giordano's of Richfield, Hula Hands Restaurant and Bar, Khan's Mongolian Barbecue, Lynn sixty-five Kitchen Bar, and Pizza Luce.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Licenses are granted. Item number thirty-two is Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
The next item is consideration of the adoption of resolutions approving the twenty-eighteen revised twenty-nineteen proposed budget and tax levy and related resolutions. On September eleventh, twenty-eighteen, the city council approved and certified a preliminary tax levy of twenty-one million, six-hundred-twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-two, which included an economic development authority levy of five-hundred-sixty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-one to Hennepin County. The final tax levy of twenty-one million, six-hundred-twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-two must now be considered and approved by the city council. Taxpayers have received individual parcel specific tax notices in anticipation of the truth in taxation hearing. The city of Richfield has conducted and closed its twenty-eighteen truth in taxation hearing on November twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen. During the course of the public hearing, there was an opportunity for testimony from the general public. Information was also presented by staff regarding the proposed levy and budget. No official city council action to act, and the levy was permissible on the day of the public hearing. Included for your consideration are salary increases for non-represented employee pay plans. The proposed increase, increases are three percent. Increase for the management and the general services and the specialized pay plans. The increases are effective the first full pay period of January twenty-nineteen. I don't know if there's anything additional from staff on this?
Um, no, there's really nothing additional, though the budget presented for you tonight is the exact same budget, budget that we approved back in September and that we also discussed at the truth in taxation hearing.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple things, that there was a great article we got a memo on from the Star Tribune, and we got a memo from our, our staff, talking about the tax increases across the metro area and the tax increases in relation to the property tax value increases, and Richfield fared, fared very, very well in comparison to its metro neighbors with tax increases of the value of our homes of ten-point-six percent, but coupled with a property tax increase of two-point-nine percent, so it compared very favorably, while we've also been absorbing debt service increases for twenty-nineteen. So if you look at our surrounding cities, you'll see property or home values that, you know, weren't, were maybe half of or less of what you saw in Richfield with increases that were even more than what we experienced here in Richfield. So, you know, this is just, the, the article was a really great way to see kind of what is going on across the whole metro area. Increases are happening everywhere, not just in Richfield, and our city has been doing an excellent job over the years to really minimize the impact on our homeowners, and that's thanks to our finance director, our former city manager, Devich, and all of our staff at the city to really focus on keeping a very lean budget, making sure that we are weaning off of our local government aid for dependency and making sure that while we are doing that, we're diversifying our tax base and maintaining quality services for our residents. So, I, I'm just trying to look at a couple notes here. I also wanted to make a comment, you know, all of this work and fiscal responsibility that our staff and our city has had over the years gives us an excellent bond rating that we're able to leverage when we're looking at the reconstructions of our infrastructure, like our sewer, our roads, and looking at ways to diversify our, our income and looking at our liquor stores and using that to, to kind of help with our parks and recreation and looking at how redevelopment coming into Richfield can help as well. So thank you for the consistent work over the years. We should really be proud, and, and thanks so much to the city staff who have been working on this to make sure that we, we minimize the impact on our residents. Any other comments, or otherwise I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution, uh, adopt resolutions approving the twenty-eighteen revised and twenty-nineteen proposed budget and tax levy related, and related resolutions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed.
Good job, Mr. Regis.
Thank you.
This side, next item calls to the consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the Housing and Redevelopment Authority to submit an application to the Brownfield Gap Financing Program for Funds to Pay for a Phase Two Environmental Assessment of sixty-five oh-one Penn Avenue. On August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority approved a purchase agreement to purchase sixty-five oh-one Penn Avenue for free, excuse me, for future mixed-use to vet redevelopment. As part of its due diligence, the HRA had a Phase One Environmental Site Assessment prepared. Because of the many years of automotive-related uses on the site, the Phase One recommended that a Phase Two Environmental Assessment be prepared to determine whether or not any environmental contamination exists. Hennepin County provides funding through its Brownfields Gap Financing Program to cities and nonprofit organizations for environmental assessment. Staff has prepared an application to this program to cover the twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-dollar cost of the Phase Two Assessment. A city council resolution authorizing the application, the application submittal is required. Any comments? I, I think you all recall when we purchased the automotive building, and it only made sense to prop, to apply for this, this grant to, to cover the Phase Two Environmental Assessment. Absent any additional questions, I would move to adopt a resolution authorizing the Housing and Redevelopment Authority to submit an application- Housing and Redevelopment Authority to submit an application to the Brownfield Gap Financing Program to pay for a Phase II environmental assessment of 6501 Penn Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution is passed. Next item on the agenda calls for the consideration of the approval of an employment agreement between the city of Richfield and Catherine Rodriguez to serve as city manager of the city of Richfield. Before I give the executive summary, I just would suggest to future city manager Rodriguez that this agenda was cut short just for you so you didn't have to stay here all night. Be prepared next time. City, city manager Steve Devech announced his retirement in June affecting November 30th, 2018. In August, city council approved the hiring of Richard Fersman of Way Life to complete the executive recruitment process to hire a new city manager. Mr. Fersman received 33 applications for the position. He reviewed the applications, vetted the candidates, and prepared a report of the top 13 candidates for the council to consider at the October 30th work session. City council invited six finalists for interviews over a two-day process on November 16th and 17th. The council, along with the city staff group, interviewed four finalists who chose to participate in the process. The council voted to extend an offer of employment as city manager to Catherine Katie Rodriguez and authorized Mr. Fersman to begin contract negotiations. Ms. Rodriguez accepted the city's offer of employment as city manager and will begin employment on January 2nd, 2019. Mr. Fersman negotiated a contract with Ms. Rodriguez with an annual salary of $150,000 and other benefits as outlined in the employment agreement. Any comments before I move it?
We're excited to have you as a part of our team in the new year.
So at this time, I would move to approve an employment agreement between the city of Richfield and Catherine Rodriguez to serve as city manager of the city of Richfield.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The contract is passed. Ms. Rodriguez, would you like to just step up and, and put a face to the name for the constituents that are still up and watching?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I will make it very brief since you've had a very big meeting today, but I'll just say that I'm really honored and humbled to be the next city manager. The, the pride in Richfield is palpable and I'm excited to be a part of that. I, since the, my, the offer has become public, I have, every single day I have people that say, "Oh, I'm a resident of Richfield. We bought my parents' home. I went through the Richfield schools. I love Richfield." So it's really exciting, also really grateful for the time that the department directors and Steve and Pam have made for me, so I'm trying to get a head start a little bit by meeting with folks ahead of time, so really excited to get started. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much, and welcome to the family. City managers' report.
Very briefly, I just want to also welcome Katie and look forward to working, working together with you and extend just my appreciation of working with Councilmember Howard and Mayor Elliott all these past years. And I know this isn't goodbye because I know I'll be seeing you both around, but have really enjoyed working with both of you, so. And that's it for tonight's city managers' report.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have, we have an open forum. Everybody else got to say a nice word about you. We're already two, two and a half hours in. May I have a word for the open forum?
That means yes.
Yes.
Yes. I, I just wanted to say publicly, of course, I say it privately, too, but I appreciate you guys both very much, your friendship. The word that comes to mind often when I, when I think about this, this, this group is comedy. It's a word that we don't use all the time and for, for folks at home that are racing for their dictionary, it just, it, it's a spirit of a friendship and civility, even indifference, especially in deliberative bodies like this. And especially your, your leadership, Pat. You set the tone for us. You set vision for us. I've, it's been a privilege to, to serve with you and under your leadership. And Michael, I appreciate so much. I've learned a lot from you in those last couple of years, but particularly your passion for people. You get that, you get that look in your eyes when you just, the idea occurs to you, "Oh, we could help people this way," and it just never leaves. And I just admire that in you and, and I'm, and I'm glad, I was, I was pleased to cast my vote for you because I'm glad you're doing that for, for us at the, at the next level. So, so good luck.
Thank you.
Just in parting, I just would like to, to thank the citizens of Richfield. I was elected to office four times and I, the first time, and this is just kind of a payback to Councilmember Garcia, she wrote a scathing op-ed letter saying that no one in Richfield can be elected if they don't doorknob. Well, I didn't and I was. So, and, but once again, I honestly can say I loved every minute of it and, and I would endorse pursuing public service to anybody in Richfield that really wants to get to know the city and from my perspective, have the best time of your life. So, thank you all very much.
And I know we've been here for two and a half hours, but I do have just a few parting comments as well and some thank yous. I am just so proud of my time on the city council, of what we've worked, worked on together and built, and I don't just mean kind of the bricks and mortar or the new roads that we paved, but just the conversations and just what a time to have been here at the city for our city's future, just so much hope and optimism, challenge. But I feel like I was able to kind of hop on a train that was moving in the right direction and help keep it moving in the right direction and sometimes move it in new directions, which is just an amazing opportunity. And just one story that I think of often, or I have thought of often in the last four years, was one of the very first emails I received from a woman named Martha. There was just, there had been a construction project in her neighborhood and there was some blockage in her walkway or her sidewalk. And, you know, I was a new council member, I didn't know what to do, so I called Steve, City Manager Devech, who then quickly put me in touch with Public Works and within 24 hours, you know, that had been resolved. We'd solved that problem and, and Martha emailed back and was just so grateful and couldn't believe how quickly we were able to solve that problem. And I've just thought about that often because it just, it feels so on point with our mission at the city to, to listen and to be responsive to our community and to solve problems. And that's just such a small example, but one that just shows that it takes teamwork to, to do that and that cities are close to the, our communities and can help make our government work better for people right out their front door. And that has been a part of the service that I've particularly enjoyed. And of course, not all the problems that we faced can be solved in 24 hours. Some of them take weeks, months, years, decades, and I've appreciated that, too, the level of commitment from our staff, from colleagues, from the community about this work that we might all just be here for a term or four terms, but that it's part of making sure that our community is a strong place now, but for a generation to come. And I just have to, I know we've been here for a while, but a few thank yous. I have to thank all of our city staff who just are so professional, smart, kind, selfless, you name it. And, you know, their, their work is incredible and I'm just so grateful. And I just started listing some of the names and I'm, I'm gonna run through them really fast, but I just feel like I have to. I want to thank Steve Devech, Pam Detranco, Chief Hen Thorne, Chief Keywich, Chris Regis, Chris Link, Kristen Asher, Jeff Pearson, Jack Bros, Liz Finnegan, Mike Peterson, Jim Topitzoff, John Stark, Melissa Palman, Julie Urban, Kate Aginson, Jared Voto, our attorney Mary Techen, Beth Van Hoos, Neil Ruland, Matt Brillhart, Lynette Chambers, Karen Schrug, just to name a few of the city staff that over the years has provided just an amazing level of service to the community and helped to me as a council member. And then to my colleagues up here, I want to thank Simon. We haven't served together all that long, but I've just always appreciated your, your curiosity and your ambassadorship for Ward One and for Richfield, and I know that'll continue. I already thanked Councilmember Garcia for her tips about things large and small and I know that, that guidance, that mentorship isn't going away. I'll depend on it in my new role as well. And to Mayor Elliott, and Councilmember Garcia hit on this, you know, I've had the chance to serve with you as a council member and then as mayor, and I've just really appreciated seeing your leadership grow in that you're always someone who's gonna speak your mind and tell us what you think. But as mayor, you've done that and then in addition, I've, I've always thought been a good listener and someone who is searching for the, the consensus so that we can move forward. And that leadership has really served the city well. And Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez, you know, we've only served together for two years, but it just seems like so much longer than that. I feel like you've pushed me and others to, to be better public servants and that is gonna serve you well as a mayor and, you know, I know we'll continue to work together in new roles, but I will just really miss serving with you on the city council. And a few more, then I'm, then I'm done. I've, you know, public service is a team sport and a family sport and I want to thank my wife Sarah and Calvin as Councilmember Garcia mentioned. Calvin's been kind of the, was the secret weapon of the campaign and he was helping with my city council work, too, as you might recall. Sarah's due date was the date I was sworn into office on the city council and Calvin held on for another week, so we appreciated that. They're not watching now because whenever this is, when city, they put some city council at home, Calvin will say, "This is boring." So they can watch the replay. And then, that's right. Lastly, and then just most importantly, I want to thank our community and the Richfield residents who've given me this opportunity to serve. It is an honor of a lifetime. It's something I'll take with me forever and I'm just eternally grateful. And so thank you very much and my advice to folks up here, and I already had a few small things, but just, you know, keep cleaning those sidewalks when a resident has a concern and when, when there's a calling to charter the new path, keep pushing forward, keep listening, keep expanding the voices in the room, and keep in touch because I'm not going anywhere. I'm too invested in this community and this work and so excited to see what this council does next and what our, our community does next. And with that, I'm ready to wrap up.
And with that, I will wrap up with claims and payrolls for the last time.
I will move claims and payroll and I, and I thank you for the honor and responsibility by giving me that probably the heaviest part of the, of the assignment of the agenda and for trusting me to do it. I will move claims and payroll.
You were, you were the best closer up here. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And payrolls passed, there being no further business. This meeting is adjourned.